Alright, everybody, I got six thirty-one. We'll call the regular meeting of the common council to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Seth?
Here.
Andrew? Todd Kirking?
Here.
Emma will not be here tonight. Todd Spade?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
John?
Here.
Crystal?
Here.
Steve will not be here and Justin?
Here.
Laura, you want to try AJ again?
Andrew, are you on?
Yep, just got on, had some internet issues here.
Thank you.
Alright, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Alright, item number two, approval of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, regular council minutes.
This is Crystal. I would move approval of those minutes. I don't recommend any additions or corrections.
Miss Cindy, I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, item number three, council announcements. Any member of the council have anything they'd like to bring up?
One last reminder to do this survey. That's for all the council members and all you out there for our comprehensive plan. Don't forget to do a survey online. We appreciate all your inputs.
Deadline is Friday.
Yeah.
This Friday.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anybody else? Alright, we will go to item number four then, which is the first period for public comment. Any members of the public wish to make a comment? Now would be the time. Go ahead, Randy.
How are you? Uh, Randy Skinner, E eight one eight seven, Mapledale Road. I am on the Baroque Historic Preservation Commission and the Baroque Welcome Center Task Force as well as the Design Committee. Uh, I just wanted to thank you all for your support thus far with the project. We're getting dangerously close. We're very excited. I just wanted to encourage you to approve the Artisan Preservation Bid that came in. It was definitely the lowest and they're very excited and they're quite the experts at this situation and I think we'll handle things very well. So appreciate your help and support. Thanks.
Thanks, Randy. Anybody else? No, anybody online?
We have a few folks online. If anybody would like to make a comment at this time, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Think you're good, man.
Alright, moving on to item number five, pinning ceremony for Officer Justin Wolfe. Uh, and Chief Needfeld will take over for that.
Uh, we hired, uh, Justin Wolfe in December. He did just pass, uh, went through our FTO program, which, uh, he completed here about two weeks ago. So this is just the ceremony. It kinda does that he is honorary, uh, on his own officer with the city of Baroque. So I'd like to invite, uh, Justin and his family up. He brought with his mom and brother. If you were, yeah, you can come up. So all this little kind of thing, I'll read your oath and, uh, first of all, can you just raise your right? You guys want to stand behind him? Yeah, you guys always support him. You got us back. You want to raise your right hand? I, Justin Wolfe, accept the role and responsibility of a police officer with the city of Baroque. I swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States, uphold and enforce the laws of the state of Wisconsin and the city of Baroque. So help me God, say I do. I do. The oath of honor. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character of the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, my community and the agency I serve. Say I will. I will. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much and congratulations. Alright, we will move on to item number six, which is the opera license, operator license approvals.
Okay, I had one, um, for Rihanna Aspersen for Pizza Hut is a new one. Took the class, uh, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five and, um, per chief, uh, Needfeld. This one was fine with the background check. So just looking for your approval.
This is Crystal. I'd move approval of, is it Leanna Aspersen?
Rayanna.
Rayanna, okay, pardon me for operator, uh, license.
Todd, I'll second it.
Alright, we've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright. Item number seven, discussion with possible action regarding temporary Class B beer license for Wild West Days on October fifteenth through the eighteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, this is, um, the regular Wild West Days from the fifteenth through the eighteenth of August. This went through Public Safety and they forwarded it with their approval or your approval.
Cindy, I make a motion. We approve the temporary Class B beer license for Wild West Days.
Todd, I'll second it.
Uh, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, item number eight, discussion with possible action regarding temporary Class B beer license for Wild West Days Little Britches Rodeo on September fifth through the seventh of twenty twenty-five.
Again, this went through Public Safety and it's for the September fifth through the seventh on the Wild West Days grounds for the Little Britches Rodeo. So again, they forwarded it with their approval from, um, Public Safety.
This is Todd. I move to approve the temporary Class B beer license for Wild West Days on September fifth through this, oh, the Little Britches Rodeo, um, September fifth through the seventh.
Todd, I'll second it.
Alright, got a motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, item number nine, review and approval of pay request number seven for the fire station project.
So this pay request was included as part of your packet. Um, I'll have the chief come up here and while I'm pulling that up, maybe he can go ahead and give a quick, uh, overview of progress to date.
So yeah, I mean, everything's, everything's moving along, uh, to be expected. Still running a little behind, but in general, nothing pops out, nothing's out of ordinary with this pay request, just kind of as things come in. They're starting to, uh, bill for them once they get on site. Um, it is a fairly large one this time, but that includes, um, a lot of concrete. I'm sorry, a lot of the steel structure was a big one. Um, they finally sent us a bill for the steel structure. And, uh, and if you go down to the detail one, I guess Nate, I think that's the, that's a small. If I remember correctly, that's the largest piece on there. Um, air handlers showed up, mostly air handlers. So you're talking the big, bigger ticket item ones. Um, aside from that, I really don't have anything else to add. It, it seems to be flowing in percentage wise, like we talked, uh, correctly and a couple of them are starting to play a little catch up on things that I'm really surprised we haven't seen the bill sooner, but that's okay. You know, um, but yeah, other than that, it's that's all I've got, I guess. Unless Nate, you've got a question or anybody else?
No, you can see on the, uh, pay application here, there's eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the metal building system is, uh, what Chad was referring to.
Nope.
I see that they've made some decent project, progress on the HVAC system as well.
Yep, their handlers and I think there was like six or six or seven of them that showed up or whatever. So big ticket items, but um, Levi and I talked, talked a bit about this one because it was a bigger one and, and, uh, he, he was good with it from beerbackers. So, and I concur and, and obviously Keller did too. So, um, but yeah, this was a bigger one. And again, like we discussed, so.
And I don't have anything more after that, so. Let's see where we are. So the amount due would be for one point four nine, one million, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents.
This is John. I'd move approval of the pay request.
This is Crystal. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Todd Kirking?
Aye.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Seth?
Aye.
And Andrew?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Chief. Um, item number ten, discussion with possible action regarding Welcome Center construction bids.
Hello, everybody, and thank you, as Randy said, for your support of this project. We're very excited to be at this point. I'd like to introduce the team that's here with me tonight, Randy Skinner. She already introduced herself. We've got our great architect here, Mark Settler, who we've met several times. We have Gigi Macasette from Historic Preservation. Unfortunately, Randy and, um, excuse me, Randy, Karen and Jean from the Task Force could not be with us tonight. So, uh, I'd like to give you an update. We had the bid opening on March fourth and we were very pleased with the result. The four bids came in and it was quite a variance, but the lowest, apparent lowest bidder is Artisan Preservation with a six hundred and eighteen thousand base bid. And then Mark Settler is going to talk through the alternates with you. We mentioned these to you when we briefed you last time. If you'd like to come up, Mark.
Good evening. So, uh, basically after meeting with the committee, we have a recommendation for which alternates to accept and which ones to not accept. Um, the first one was adding the sink and cabinets in the large meeting room. So that would add three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars to the base bid. The second one, um, basically would have changed the concrete slab to additional concrete pavers underneath the, uh, solar panel pergola. The group recommends not accepting that, just keeping it as regular concrete. I know last time I talked to the council here, we did discuss possibly doing like a stamped concrete pattern. That's something that we could, um, entertain after a contract is signed. Uh, item number three is a white roof. Uh, basically it's a, it's a woven membrane rather than a rubber membrane. So there was a little cost savings with that. That's a four thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollar deduct. So we recommend accepting alternate number three. Alternate number four is adding insulation to the roof and that would add three thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars. That will pay for itself rather quickly over the life of the building and, uh, energy savings. So we recommend accepting that. Uh, number, the next one is, um, basically dropping a suspended ceiling like we have in this room and the meeting room. And that would have been, uh, we were hoping for a cost savings if we needed it. Uh, basically it was a wash on for the apparent low bidder on the form. So we recommend denying that and keeping the exposed structure. So that room will still have spiral duct and stained, uh, ceiling joists. And the next one, um, would be entry doors done by others supplied to the contractor. And that was a one thousand four hundred and sixty dollar deduct, so roughly five hundred dollars per door. So we recommend, uh, not accepting that. So the contractor would be responsible for providing and installing. That's a very good price for doors. And then the next one is the, uh, sona tubes or the concrete piers for that solar pergola to sit on. Um, that the low bidder, apparent low bidder just said, I've got it in my bid. So he did not provide a broken out price for that. So we will accept that one. So that is in the base bid. And finally, an automatic door operator. That's the push panel that you push the button and the door opens. So one of the pair of doors at the front of the building will have that. That adds four thousand six hundred eighteen dollars. So we recommend accepting alternate number eight. We also have two unit prices. One of them was markup on change orders, which, uh, I was surprised they, they wrote in zero percent markup. So basically if a subcontractor says we're going to charge seven thousand dollars for this change order, the general contractor passes it through and it's a seven thousand dollar change order. So that's, you usually only see that when it gets really competitive with bidding and the contractor really wants the project. Normally you see ten, sometimes twelve or fifteen percent. And finally, uh, tuck pointing. And we talked about this a little bit. We don't know how much tuck pointing that's fixing the mortar joints we're going to have to do because there's plaster on the inside walls yet. And when that plaster's down, then we'll see how much we have to clean up and take care of inside the building. So that is, uh, if you reduce the amount of tuck pointing, that would deduct thirty-eight dollars a square foot. If you add tuck pointing, that would add thirty-eight dollars a square foot to the bid price. Uh, right now there's six hundred and forty square feet in the base bid, which is about twenty-five percent of the outside of the building and nothing on the inside. So we probably will be adding to the base bid with additional tuck pointing. Once that plaster's taken off and we can quantify it, but we don't know right now. So, uh, I recommend accepting both of those unit prices as well. Any questions?
Thanks, Mark. Um, did anybody? And I don't know what your flow is on this, Cindy, but Mark had mentioned the, uh, committee that approved these design chair, these choices for alternatives. That's the design committee that was approved to like look at the project and included the members of Karen and Randy, Cindy, myself, as well as two members from the chamber were involved on sort of design decisions to make sure that the building kind of fit their needs. That's who he's referring to. Did anybody have any, do we want to get into the questions about the alternate choices? Are there any concerns about what was made or did you want to talk about that a little later?
Um, not exactly what you're referring to.
Just the, the, the alternate selection. Is there any concerns or questions on why the alternates that were selected and the ones that were rejected were done? I just want to make sure we don't move too fast on.
I just had one question on the, the door, um, operating. Does that, that's ADA compliant, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a big thing. Yes.
It's actually a step up above ADA compliance.
Yes. Okay, so that took our base bid from six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars up to six twenty-five, five oh seven. So if you go to the next page, Nate will go into details on this, but total construction costs are, we estimate to be eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. So far we have raised seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So that money needed is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. We have, uh, four asks that we have gone to indirectly asking and they're very interested. Their businesses very interested in pledging money, but they had to send it up the flagpole, so to speak, and get permission. So we are waiting to hear from that, but we're very confident that we'll be able to raise the twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, any questions on that? Uh, construction, uh, we hope that we, he has not taken another project before us so that he or they, Artisan Preservation can start right as soon as weather allows. Since there's what, four or five people?
It's about a four to six person per company.
So it could take as long as a year. So we think worst case construction completed by June of twenty twenty-six. So, but hopefully by the winter, fall, we'll have a roof on it, which is a big thing. So. Any questions on this? Nate will go into more detail, I think, on the construction costs.
Yeah, one thing to note on there is, um, and I didn't catch this before Cindy, but on the left-hand side, that gray row that says total construction cost, uh, perhaps a more fitting name is total project costs because that eight hundred and ten thousand dollars includes architectural fees, costs of hooking up electricity, you know, um, service fees, things like that. And so there's a lot more in that. The, as Cindy said, the construction, um, cost itself was that number that was on page
Six twenty-five.
Six hundred and twenty-five thousand, five oh seven is, is what the current construction, total construction cost with selected alternates would be.
Thank you, Nate. Good point. Okay, did you want to move on to then your slides? And this is just the floor plan again. No changes from what you saw last.
And in fact, I would say what's really fantastic is that the outcome of the bids plus how the alternates were bid on, um, feel really good. There's not much there that we had to leave on the table, so to speak. Uh, and I'm kind of speaking for the design team. We got um, for that price, everything we wanted, a good base bid. We got the paddle for the front door, the automatic door opener. We were able to maintain the aesthetic we wanted in the meeting room. Um, and everything else was either a wash or a very reasonable price where we would feel, um, feel silly not to take. And I, and I saw some eyebrows go up over this one. And again, while it's a fourteen hundred dollar deduct, it would cost us way more to go get the doors ourselves and then bring them over and give them to them to install. So we might as well, if you can get the doors for that cheap, please, yes, we'll take them, right?
Yeah, those are just the exterior doors. Uh, I did, I got estimates from an Amish doormaker and it was, you know, seven thousand and more to have those exterior doors made. It's very expensive. The interior doors, we're still planning on using the old city hall doors as many as we can. I think ten. Um, they're being, the stain is being removed or paint is being removed now by an Amish gentleman. And then we have another Amish, uh, doormaker will, uh, stain them. So I think we'll have some really nice doors inside with some history behind them.
So just an elaboration on the budget as Cindy was referring to is here's where we're at versus where we're at when we let the project out to bid. And I'll zoom in for everybody for this. So you can see here when we released the project for bid, we were at seven hundred and fifty-six thousand for total project costs. As Cindy sort of, um, noted in her presentation, she rounded up, but eight hundred and nine thousand, just short of eight hundred and ten thousand dollars is where the project budget was at. This, um, here shows the variance from one budget to the next. Again, for the way we do things here is if the expenses go up, it's shown as a negative variance because that's how it impacts the net. And you can see here the three areas where we really increased costs. One is design services and fees. Um, we have to bring on a third party inspector on this project as well because there's a minor conflict of interest between the individual who, um, won the bid and Mark. Um, it is something that we talked about well ahead of time, knowing that it could be a possibility. I reached out to Veerbacker and essentially we budgeted for about a thousand dollars per month to sort of move the pay request through. It's a much smaller building than the fire station, not nearly as much to look at. And those pay, or those inspector fees are about two, what was it? Two sixty, two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars a month. So the proportion seems right and, um, it would be the same gentleman acting in the third party, but it is an increase. Um, but Mark did note that, um, part of his contract that would have covered that would be decreasing as a result. Okay, but it's not a one-to-one. There is a twelve thousand dollar variance. Um, construction costs, you can see that we were very close, um, to where we wanted to be. This and what's most interesting is that this budget number here assumed that we had, that we were going to cut all the alternates. But six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars means that we would have to basically lose everything and, and make some tough choices. This is the number getting mostly everything we want. And maybe an argument could be made that it should, would be nice to have the pavers instead of the concrete slab, but we're within ten thousand dollars and I feel like we're getting a lot more. So that's what Cindy was sort of talking about, like we're I think very happy with the bid results as they came in. Um, and then finally contingency, and this is the biggest area and really what we're trying to make sure that extra funds are available for is that the previous budget had a five percent contingency, but after talking with Mark, he strongly, strongly suggested us walk into this with a 10% contingency. And so, um, essentially, you know, the conversation has been, let's build that bank up and make sure that if we have to do more tuck pointing or there's more issues that we uncover as some of the plaster comes off, we're ready to deal with it. But there is some optimism, given the fact that a lot of the building is exposed already, right? Um, less secrets to hide. So that brings in a fifty-three thousand dollar difference from what our budget was to what it actually is now. And since that point, since the bid openings, there has been over thirty thousand dollars raised to help catch up to that, which is where Cindy points out that the delta at this point from project expenses to project revenues is about twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And so that feels good and that was good, quick work. Um, and I don't know if you want to elaborate. Oh, you already kind of elaborated on where they intend to find the additional twenty-seven thousand, five hundred from. Um, that's sort of the budget as it sits right now. Are there any questions? Um, some other pieces of information before we move forward with, with possible action on the construction bids is I've always talked about this project is sort of having three things that need to come into play or be completed before I would feel comfortable recommending, um, approval. One is the capital, which we're talking about right here. The second is the operating costs. Um, we've had conversations with the tourism commission recently about them chipping in more. Well, let me start with the chamber. The chamber approved the lease agreement at their last meeting two weeks ago, a week and a half ago. If you remember, the council approved our end of it. So we have a long-term tenant. That was one of the other legs of the stool was that we need this building to have purpose for us to move forward with it and, and to invest in it. We wanted to have purpose. And I think with the chamber in there as the, as the tenant, um, on a long-term lease gives the building a heck of a lot of purpose as a place for them, Chamber of Commerce, the main street to operate as well as a spot for tourism. And with that is operating costs, right? One of my concerns, and I always said this to Cindy, is I'm worried about building more buildings when we, it takes money to operate buildings. Well, the long-term tenant, that is the chamber covers that. Tourism commission met last week and confirmed their commitment to pay for any additional cost as part of the overhead agreement that they have with the chamber. So the tourism commission continues to be on board with it. And so we sort of rounded the bases again in this past month to make sure that all of our key stakeholders and people who had obligations to the building were still in and they are. And so really what's left on the table is, is this gap in funding that I think Cindy has noted along with the members of the, um, Historic Preservation Task Force who have been working on this so much is that they will get those dollars and, and get them to the table when we need them. So that's the risk to the city in my mind right now is what happens if that doesn't happen? We're on the hook for it, right? The twenty-seven, five hundred. Um, so at that point you can choose whether you're ready to move forward at this point or not. Anything else?
No, I feel confident they will be able to raise the money, like I said, so. I hope that you'll decide to approve the contractor tonight. Sooner we can start, the better.
I would say in the interest of any construction at this point, it's always better to get the ball rolling sooner than later, considering where costs can go. I know there's a, obviously a bid, but most contingency changes. So I really like it.
This is Seth. I would make a motion that we would accept the construction bid as proposed by Artisan Preservation and move forward with their contract.
AJ, I'll second.
Flip a coin. Yeah, we've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Questions? Go ahead. Sorry. Uh, comment was made to maybe clarify the alternates.
I will amend my motion to include and exclude the suggested recommendation, um, alternatives from the committee.
CJ, again, I'll still second.
I had alternate one, three, four, seven and eight that were approved.
That's correct.
I'll get it. I'll get it in there for you.
Yep. We're good. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Seth?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Todd Kirking?
Alright. Alright, thank you. Um, moving on, item number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding contract for third-party peer review for community safe room.
Okay. So this room we're sitting in right now was built as a community safe room per FEMA three sixty-one standards. Um, it was paid for through a grant, uh, in the tune of six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. A partial grant, which is about eighty-seven and a half percent of the total cost of creating this room, which was a great benefit to the city because it also helped just create this room for non-emergency purposes like we're using it today. Um, as part of this obligations of that grant, um, we were required to do a third-party review. Um, or actually it was Um, or actually it was talked about at that point as a peer review. Saying you need to have somebody who's done one of these, look at your design and make sure it's done to the standards. Um, and I'm guessing that's there because they don't have their own in-house architect coming and looking at it like they do, um, with the USDA. USDA has an architect who sort of oversees pay requests and some of the things and has been working alongside us on a project like the fire station. FEMA, Wisconsin Emergency Management, doesn't have something like that, which is why I'm guessing they want a peer review. When we were doing the project way, and started it way back in mid twenty twenty. Um, and designing it, we thought, great, the peer review can be done by another architect within ADCI. Because one of the gentlemen had just done the Prairie Duchesne safe room. And so I said, well, that'll work out nicely. We can do that. We didn't think about it otherwise. ADCI didn't think about it otherwise. So fast forward to about three months ago. And we're closing out the project finally because we had to finish some things up. And, um, I go to put the certification that ADCI needs to sign in front of them. They said, oh, we can't sign this. This is a third-party review. Ours is in-house. So I went back to FEMA, said, are you sure they can't sign this? Because that would be great. And there's no reason, he just did the Prairie Duchesne one. And she said, well, let me see, I'll run up the ladder. Well, the answer comes back, no. Said, okay, well, what do we do now? So over the course of the last two and a half months, I've been, uh, well, another question I had is, do we have to do it? Isn't it enough that one architect has already put his stamp on it? He's already put a stamp on, not only it's been designed, but built to three sixty-one standards. Do we really need to do this? She runs it up the ladder, FEMA says no. So over the course of the last two and a half months, I've been going around to different entities. Um, Keller was one of them. I went to Veerbecker, two people we're working with and said, who can help us out with this and act as a third-party consultant on it? And, uh, of course, um, Veerbecker being reliable has always jumped into action. Found another structural engineer that they could bring in and offers this proposal for us to look at in order to close out the project. And so this was included as part of your packet. You'll see that it's for them to put, uh, a, a third-party peer review together. I did put this in front of FEMA and says, if we're going to spend money on this, you need to tell me if it's gonna meet your needs for closing this out. And they confirmed it. They had no issues with it. Um, you'll notice here at the bottom that their amount of money that it could cost us really is somewhat wide. And that really depends how much they can get out of ADCI in terms of information, who is our architect on the project originally. ADCI, to their credit, has been awesome. They've been wonderful. Like, obviously we want you to get this project fully wrapped up and done and out the door. And, and so I really appreciate Mike Moss, who was our architect, his time and effort. And sort of having meetings with me over the course of the past couple of months, trying to figure out how to, how to do this. And so I'm hopeful that this number will come in lower. Um, but, uh, the question is, how do we pay for it? And so, uh, I spe- spoke with once again, our FEMA individual, or actually she's with Wisconsin Emergency Management. And I said, can this get reimbursed? And she's like, yes, but we need the, number one, we would need to know what the actual amounts are before we reimburse them. And two, we, we would have to have those to actually request an additional obligations of fund. Since this amount wasn't included in our original grant, which it could have been. It was an eligible cost. We just misunderstood it at the beginning of the project. That a peer review couldn't be done in-house by the architect. So it should have always been included. It should have been noted from the, from the beginning. Um, and it was just a miss. And I'll, and I'll take ownership of that. It was just missed. There was a heck of a lot going on at that point. COVID. We're at the front end of COVID. We had a USDA loan that we were trying to lock down. We were trying to go through this large design process and just didn't fully grasp that it had to be a third party. But she's gonna go try to get it. The hard part is we're not gonna know whether they can approve the re-obligation until after we spend the money. Like I can't get pre-authorization for additional money. We have to spend it, know what the dollar amount is, and then submit it to them to say, here you go. Um, I did ask her to go ahead and get that ball rolling because I don't know how long some of this stuff is gonna take. And she has these numbers to go off. I said, just make it ten thousand dollars. If we have to pitch in three thousand dollars, fine, but we need to try to get some of this money reimbursed. Um, I think I maybe said fifteen thousand dollars to her. Anyway. Um, so she's gonna try doing that, but at the end of the day, from my estimation, there's no way we can't move forward and get this done. And we're obligated to do it. The performance period, which means the amount of time we have to actually complete the project and close out the grant is coming to an end here. I think it's June or July. And so we need to, we need to get this done. And so I'm optimistic that they will re-obligate funds, but you also have to remember we're dealing with fifty percent of the money is federal funds, twelve and, well, let me think here. Seventy-eight and a half. Right? So I think it's twenty, twenty-two and a half is state funds, fifty percent federal, something like that. So hard to say what we'll be able to get out of the federal government in terms of re-obligation of funds, but, um, at least it's a, a little bit of a hope, but, but it's hard to say with any amount of certainty whether it will happen or not. I think WEM will be interested in trying to pitch in, but, um, it's hard to say. So this is what's in front of you. And, um, I'm sorry that there's additional costs that continue to pile onto this project, but at this point, I, I don't have better answers for you on how to avoid it. Cause I feel like I spent the last three months on and off in conversations trying to, I don't want to say weasel our way out of it, but just to like ask politely, like, is this really necessary? I feel like the building's done. It, it's, it's just a, it's just a requirement of the project. It's a, another hurdle you have to sign off on to say you did it right. And I, I appreciate it. They have their rules just like we do ours.
Not to muddy it backwards, but had ACDI, or is it ADCI, ADCI? When they were the third-party peer review on the Prairie Duchesne one, they weren't the initial architects. So that's why they were able to take care of that one or doesn't really matter.
So I don't know whether, I don't know who did the third-party peer review on the ADCI one. Our architect didn't work on that project. It was another architect in his firm.
Okay.
That worked on the project. And I suppose through, it would have been possible that that person should have been like, oh, wait a minute. I, if you're expecting me to do that, I can't do that on the Prairie Duchesne project. Fowler and Hammer did it for me, or some other firm did it for me. But again, there were so many moving pieces on this project, especially at that point in time. That it just never came to light that that was not something we could do.
And definitely realize this is where we need to get the bow on it, so. Do, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Did you have a question?
Um, this is Crystal and I was gonna recommend that we contact the third-party peer review for the Baroka community safe room with Veerbiker. Okay. Do I need any more information than that?
Maybe put the range.
Okay. And the range, I believe, was from seven to thirteen thousand. Okay.
Cindy, I'll second that.
All right. Got a motion, a second. Any other questions? New roll call, please.
Cindy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Crystal?
Hi.
Seth?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Todd Kirkking?
Hi.
And Todd Spade.
Hi.
All right. Item number thirteen, discussion with possible action on TRC proposal for consulting service on closed landfill monitoring.
It's one of these really fun meetings, isn't it? Okay, so going back about three weeks ago. Um, we ended up, um, having MG&E contact the city because they were at the Living Faith Church in Baroka doing a routine check. And they discovered that there was low levels of methane in the building. And so they let us know because we may be one reason why they have that. Um, we have an old landfill on the end of Sands Road. There's actually two sections, right? There's the one between Main Street and Chicago Avenue. And then there's a section between Chicago Avenue and like the wastewater treatment plant area. And that landfill, well, when you talk to the folks in, in the industry, they say that was a dump back then. That wasn't really a landfill. Um, it was closed in the early nineties. There was a new set of regulations that came in that were gonna be way more stringent and require different ways of going about landfilling. And so the state went around to communities all across Wisconsin and said, now is a good time to get out of the landfill business. And so Baroka took them up on that. And at that time, we did everything that we needed to do in order to properly close that landfill, which essentially was cover, have a clay cap on top of it. Um, they have like ditching around it. I don't know if anybody's gone out there and seen it, but there's like a ditch that goes around it. And then fence it off, um, and ensure there's, um, what they call candy canes or like vents that are on the top. You can see this like white PVC pipe with like, I call it a gooseneck, but I guess a gooseneck's more squiggly, but like, um, to make sure that there's no moisture going into it. And that was the passive venting system for methane. Um, so they came to us and let us know about the situation. So I called the DNR and said, you know, what, what do we do in this situation? I had been, so I've never been approached by the DNR about the landfill in the fourteen years I've worked here. Uh, but I've approached them on a number of occasions because we were looking about like, what could we do with this space, right? There was conversations about a dog park possibly, or soccer field, sort of those kinds of things. And so they had come out a number of times and again, everything was as it was supposed to be. Um, but in talking to them now, they started asking more questions about, um, like, do we have monitoring wells? So apparently, um, typically when you put in a passive gas system, you have like wells that like little pipes essentially that go into the landfill to monitor if there's gases. And we never did because we never had to at the time. But it makes it hard to know what's happening with the landfill when you don't have anything to monitor it. Um, so one of the gentlemen that I had worked with before from the DNR, his name is Marty Hen- Hen- Herrick? Excuse me. Um, he was the DNR agent, has since gone to this firm, TRC. So in sort of the lack of information, we started doing the history dig and turned to like figure out all of these things. Both the DNR and myself. Um, and so I thought, you know, let's find Martin. Because Marty was the guy who I'd always talked to about it. And so he, um, now works for this firm and was very helpful in helping us figure out some of the whys and how we ended up, you know, with passive gas mon- or passive gas venting, but not monitoring. And so, uh, he came out with another representative and we walked out there and did some testing on the vents that are out there. Um, and essentially we've found a little bit of gas, but not a lot. And it was unclear exactly what was happening because we didn't have the monitoring wells. So over the last two weeks, we've been working on, um, trying to figure out what a good plan is to figure out what's happening. Um, the DNR would like us to find out what's happening. Um, and also, you know, we want to be careful about the property. So that would be the east side at the church. Um, but we also want to make sure we're aware of being a good neighbor because we're gonna have a development north of this current location. And so that was what I asked him to come out and try to help us just kind of get a general idea of the situation. Uh, and then how can we make sure we're a good neighbor? Um, and so he presented this proposal. Like I said, we've been working on it for a while. Originally, he had just looked at doing the testing and sort of leaving it at that. But his recommendation, so he is a landfill specialist. He has, um, a gas person that he works with specifically landfill gas, um, specialist that is also a part of this proposal. As you can see going through. And, um, they recommended in the end, having them permanently monitored. So that we always know on the east and the north side of that area, what is happening with gases. And so that's, um, if you would scroll down a little bit, Nate. So that's essentially what this proposal is, is kind of a two-part proposal, even though it's in one section. So they're offering their consulting services to us about one, doing the current work. Um, analyzing the monitoring. And then if necessary, advising us if there's anything we need to do further. Or if nothing's that we need to do further, there's just, you know, our consultant that can help us through. Um, so it talks a little bit about that Marty and Mike was, would be the, um, gas person. And then the budget total is that twenty-eight thousand six hundred. And so the first part of that is like the TRC specific, like consulting fees. But then they have that twelve thousand two seventy-one, which is the actual like construction of those monitoring wells. Um, they've been really good about moving quickly because that was what I was hoping. I said, we need answers sooner than later. You know, it's not something we want to be speculating about. Um, I will wa- wanna say that this is, so the landfill itself has two sort of cells or areas. So this is for the one on the east side only. And it's monitoring on the east side and the north side. So it's not all sides, but these are the sides that, um, we have the closest neighbors. And we feel like we want to make sure that we know exactly what's happening on that side, of those two sides. Um, so he's talking about getting these guys out, mobilize in the next week or two, which I think is awesome. Um, and then obviously like trying to understand exactly all of what's going on with the monitoring. So this is a, like a one sort of study. They do talk about like future monitoring. So if they came out, say, once a year, there was like, I think it was two thousand dollars. I can't remember off the top of my head, Nate, but that would be like the fee for them to come and reassess everything. Uh, this would put us in line with, if we followed current rules about landfill, that's the kind of monitoring that we would be doing with a current, like a, if we had a landfill now. So I think it's, it's a responsible thing for the city to do about making sure we're knowing exactly what's happening out there. Um, and so this is also, uh, sort of putting our toes in the water here, so to speak. Um, and then it'll help us understand more about the landfill itself. And then if we need to look at the west side in the future. If they're for future development on the west side. So happy to answer questions if I can answer them.
You talked about that two thousand dollars yearly monitoring fee. If they set it up with these monitors, would it be something that the city ourselves can monitor and we don't need to have them reviewing it? Or is that something over and above?
Good question. That was the first question I asked him when they were out there. I was like, hey, that machine that you have, how much does it cost? He's like, I think it's about twenty thousand dollars. And it is certainly something that we could look at. So, um, you know, I have one, learned one thing in my, my time here. Um, I'm an environmental engineer. I actually, this was a part of my training. However, it's hard to be a specialist. I'm a jack of all trades. So I think to a certain extent, and I've worked with different consultants like Veerbiker. Part of the thing that really works well with Veerbiker and the city is they allow like me to do things I can do. And they sort of step back and they're not sort of like all encompassing. So we would certainly have to talk to them about it. But there is definitely an investment that we would need to put into like just even having the equipment.
I have a question. And if I'm out of line, Lori, let me know because I'm not sure. Um, I, I understand that the city may be responsible for me remediation if that has to occur. And I'm just wondering what the source of that funding could be. It's all hypothetical. Is that okay?
Well, I don't want to steal Nate's thunder, um, about talking about this specifically. So, um, for this proposal, you know, we, we can talk about, I'll let Nate talk about what he's looking for for funding. Um, if there was something to happen in the future, I guess we would need to look at where, what exactly was benefiting and where we had the resources. Um, there's some pretty simple things that you can do. And then there's some more complicated things. But I would say, um, this seems to be an industry where they don't get super complicated with things. Yeah. Do you want me to go further, Nate, or you want to jump in?
Oh, go ahead. Uh, uh, do you have more you would like to?
No, no, I mean, if you want to talk about funding.
Yeah. So Sarah and I talked about this and, and this is come, this is evolved quickly. And I would agree with her greatly that this has to be the responsible, responsibility of the city. I mean, it's our landfill. And, uh, making sure that we're good stewards of it as it lives its life, um, is important. Um, especially noting that the properties around the landfill are Especially noting that the properties around the landfill are trying to develop into, I mean, there's already, a mobile home park, uh, you know, that's adjacent to it. We're looking at the Hanson Farm, possibly another development north of there. I would call this a, a great opportunity to leverage tid seven resources to support, um, future development and just making sure we know exactly what we're dealing with there. Um, I think it's part and parcel of the engineering we've done on the property already. And so for that reason, and, and a lot of the reasons, because we don't have general funds ready to levy towards it, I would consider this a cost of development and, and just couch the lance that way, which I think is very legitimate. I do need to confirm, um, with Kurt real quick that it is a, a tid eligible expense. This proposal, uh, did come in hot today. And so I don't think Sarah and I have had the time to really absorb 32 pages of documentation. So I, if we were to move forward on this, I would say there would be a couple of contingencies. One, that we confirm the funding source is eligible and two, allow Sarah and I time to just, do our due diligence on the document itself. But it's not a fun cost. I think Sarah prefaced it nicely when she came up here. It was like, this is, this is a lot of, needing, you know, the kids coming to you guys asking for allowance, but they're all on very worthy projects that need to get remedied between this room down here as well as the landfill. So, any, any other questions about where we're sitting on with this?
Not about fin- finances. I just had a couple of question. Now that you talked about the, the vents that are existing, are they meant to off gas?
Yeah.
And then they are, they're not plugged up or anything like that?
Well, we were able to get only a small reading on that one area. And so part of what is this is for is to try to figure out if it's, so we don't have a lot of information about the contents of the landfill. It kind of was a little bit of a hodgepodge and the development of the gas is related to what's in there. Right? And so if it's biodegradable and creating methane, then obviously it will. But if the, what it's made up of is mostly like construction materials, it's really not going to produce gas like that. And the other thing that we're not really sure of is, is it just because of the age? Is that why we're not seeing much? Or is it that the passive gas system just needs some work? Because again, it was installed in the early nineties and we're, you know, 35 years later. We really, you know, no one's maintained them per se, right? That's just kind of been sitting there.
So you were, you were expecting more gas, gas off coming out of them vents?
Well, so the other side of the landfill had more gas come off of it. And so that's part of us trying to understand exactly why they're different. And it may just be that their composition's different. And if it wasn't for the fact that we found like the, with the church having some issues, knowing that, that there was something happening there, we just want to, we want to make sure that, is it us? Is it, there was something on the site already? And then again, you know, we're now becoming very close neighbors to other things. And so we want to make sure we're very clear about what's going on there.
Lot of, lot of sighs around the room tonight.
This is Crystal and I would move, because I do, this is important and it's, it's our, our, our business. I would move that we accept the TRC proposal for consulting services on the closed landfill monitoring. And that we keep, um, two contingencies. One is, is complete review by staff and any parties that are needed. And then also to confirm the eligibility of funding sources.
This is Todd. I'll second the motion.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
And Cindy.
Hi.
All right. Moving right along to item number 14, payment of the bills.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
I don't think.
Something that Lori needed to point out.
Yeah. Got a motion in a second.
Okay. And at finance or whatever, I just wanted to point out, if you have any questions on any of these, please let me know. But I did have an additional bill that did not make it on the additional bill listing for GEC. And it's for the plan review for the salt shed and the amount of $600. And so we're also asking for that to be included with the bills that are approved tonight. So if you could also add that onto your motion, that would be great.
I would amend that we paid GEC for the salt shed in an amount of $600 in addition to the rest.
All right.
Are you okay with a second on that?
Second, that do. Yeah. You got a motion, a second. Any other questions? Do a roll call, please.
Crystal.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
And John.
Hi.
All right. Um, item number 15, possible closed session per Wisconsin statute 1985 one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties. The investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And this is in regards to memorandums of understandings for the Hanson Farm Development with Kickapoo Development LLC, Newen House Development LLC, and Vic Meyer Wongan Properties LLC and Mooney Development.
Cindy, you make a motion, we go into closed session.
This is Crystal, second.
Got a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Before we go into roll call, um, I would make a recommendation, everybody's, I was trying to, you can open those up if you would, just for now. So I would make a recommendation that we go through the MOUs in open session because they are matters of public interest. If we have items that we want to discuss that would impact our bargaining position, I would tell you to save that conversation or those questions for closed session. But we don't necessarily need to go into closed session or review the MOUs in the first place, if that makes sense. Because those, once we get out and re, once we get out anyway, they become matters of public interest. Right? So I think it's worthwhile reviewing them out loud. All these projects have been discussed out loud. So there's, you know, again, those are matters of public interest anyway. So I would encourage staying in open session for a bit. Um, and then I'll sort of let you know if something's a closed session item.
So we do need to rescind that motion.
I was gonna say, or we can hold a vote and everybody can vote no. How would you like to proceed?
Go ahead and vote.
Let's vote to not go into closed session. Roll call.
Seth.
Hi.
No. Try again.
Nay.
Andrew.
Nay.
Todd Kirkking.
Nay.
Todd Spade.
No.
Cindy.
Nay.
John.
Nay.
And Crystal.
All right. So that motion does not pass. We will stay in open session for now.
Okay. So, uh, James, uh, Hanky from SITA is online with us. James, can you hear us? Okay?
I can. Thank you.
Okay. Wonderful. So what I'll go ahead and do is I will go ahead and queue up the projects. Again, we're talking about four developers. James has, um, is our individual from SITA who's been assisting the city in great fashion, working with each one of the developers, um, walking them through, um, sort of the process of formulating these MOUs and putting them on paper. We have been, he has been working very quickly. These, you know, doing this for four different developments. And all the sort of, I guess nuances that come to with it, um, does take time, but he's done a tremendous job getting us to the table with a, a draft document. So I'm going to go ahead and start putting those up on screen. I'll let you, let him walk through it. Just one second as I find them. So again, just for everybody's, a reminder to everybody, this is the development in question. And we have four different developers respectively. Dragney through Kickapoo, Vic Meyer Wongan is in orange, uh, Newen House is in yellow. And then Mooney and his partner were part of, I forgot what their updated development name is. We'll have to get that into the MOU. Is located here in this gray area. So here is the first, um, MOU I'll put on screen here in word format. These are briefer documents because we are not yet into the full legal contract yet. This is just an understanding so that we can appreciate that the deal in principle is available. And so James, if you want to quickly walk through this and, um, you and I can sort of tag team it together.
Sure. That sounds great. Thank you. Um, so, you know, basically as we joined Nate and, in working with him to go ahead and develop these memorandums of understanding with each of the four developers. Uh, we started by fundamentally garnering an understanding of what their portion of the project was, what they were aspiring to do. And, uh, they had already submitted a fair amount of documentation to view as a council, kind of giving you a sense of, of what they were looking at doing. And there have been relatively few deviations from that. So, you know, kudos to those who went through the planning and design process around this project as a whole. Cause there really weren't a significant amount of changes. But, you know, what we, what we did is effectively met with each one of the developers to, you know, talk a little bit about what the understanding is currently between the city and between that developer in question. And, you know, in the instance of Dragney, um, you know, basically they are, are going to be constructing a total of 12 duplex residential buildings. That creates 24, uh, units within the, within the development. There are a hundred totals. So they're approximately a quarter of the development. And what we did, if we move a little bit farther down, Nate, is we basically came to, you know, a couple of understandings around specifically what the, the developer would be responsible for. And also what the city is agreeing to do. And, you know, for the developers, you know, fundamentally it's purchasing the property. And as you see there, um, you know, Nate's highlighted the 3.28 acres. We were a little bit off on our calculation there. So I apologize for that. That's something we'll go ahead and amend, um, you know, and, and correct prior to the final execution. But they're going to acquire that property and we anticipate they'll be acquiring that property on or around July 31st of this year. So all four of the developers have that common understanding that they will be doing the, the property acquisition right around that period of time this year. And then basically what we are, we are outlining within the development agreement is the, the developer is agreeing to construct the series of buildings within their portion of the development, um, within a certain prescribed timeline. And that timeline is relatively important because as they construct those buildings, they're generating new tax base. And that tax base, because this is within a tax increment finance district, you know, generates increment. And that tax increment is what you as a community are going to be utilizing to offset the costs associated with the infrastructure improvements that will be made by the city to facilitate the development. So, you know, in, in, uh, in Dragney's case, they're looking at, you know, four duplex buildings per year. You know, in 26, 27 and 28, that then creates a, uh, increase in equalized valuation. That valuation does occur a little bit later in, in terms of time than the actual development itself. Cause you've got a, you've got to build it and then you have to assess it. And then you basically start the process of taxing it. So they're agreeing to a baseline level of, of value. And one thing I want to make sure that, that everyone here is clear on, and this will become important as we're, you know, talking about, you know, what this all means in terms of, of how the, the tid cash flows. These are minimum valuations. Um, so we were relatively conservative with the estimates of the, uh, you know, the dollar value attributable to the new, the new development. You know, but that, you know, that increase in taxable value then, as we go down, generates tax increment that you will then be able to utilize to support the, the costs of the infrastructure improvements. So that really for the, the developer side of the equation is what's outlined within the memorandum of understanding. And then as you move into the, you know, city's portion of the understanding, the city's portion really revolves around the improvements that will be made in order to facilitate the development. If you want the development there, you're going to need streets, you're going to need, you know, sidewalks, you're going to need water, you're going to need sewer. You know, and it, it basically lays out the, 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 and defines what the city is going to be doing. You know, to go ahead and facilitate an environment that's conducive to their development. So that is, you know, effectively the, the long and the short of, of what these memorandum of understandings do. Now, you know, keep in mind that these are, these are just exactly that. They're understandings. These will then, you know, get codified into development agreements that will get much more specific in terms of what each one of the developers will be doing within their property. There've been, for instance, has been some interest in dark sky lighting out there. And we've talked with the developers a little bit about that. They'll be required to do landscaping plans, provide the final site plans for each one of the individual units. And really provide a much higher level of specific specificity around what they're doing. And at that point, the city will have a much better understanding of the costs attributable to the infrastructure improvements. Thus making it a little bit easier to, you know, evaluate the, the tid in terms of cash flow, but also, you know, the obligations the city's going to, you know, go under as a result of, of, you know, facilitating this development. Does that make sense?
Thanks, James. Um, and I, I thought that was a good overview. I, I think there's just a couple, um, parts of it I really want to highlight because these will come back to us in the development agreement. And we thought they were important that we wanted the developers to know about it. So you'll see some of those in here. One thing I'll just touch on is this is the increment, the additional taxes that we need from this property. This is the guaranteed tax increment revenue. Again, if it, it's the minimum. So if they end up generating more, then definitely helps us and we don't, you know, uh, to, to pay for things a little bit better or additional projects if there's a surplus. There's a clawback provision here that you can see, whereas after one year of the above schedule, there's just a delay. We have the ability at our discretion to purchase them back, um, for $35,000. Typically what we would do is a development agreement, there's also, um, covering the cost of, uh, closing and things like that. Usually when we sell, you know, the seller covers closing costs where we would cause them to have to take down on as well. And, again, that's where you get into the mission a little bit more. Up here is what James was talking about regarding, um, the city's ability to, uh, work with them on, I'm sorry. Leave us down here a little bit further. Bacon lots. Uh, oh, right here. Submit site plans, building plans, landscaping plans. Again, we'll get into that. This protects us from if we sell to developers, they can't sell to a different developer. Right? This protects us so that we're always maintained that we're the, we choose who we're doing business with. We choose who we're working with. If, if they want to get out from under it and, and have lined up a new dance partner for us, we can make the decision and say yes or no. Okay. And again, this is, uh, some language that just goes into, um, giving, similar to what we did with the Vic Meyer Wongan project out on Silverthorne on Arena Drive, is if they're being sold to owner occupied, occupied units, we outright allow that, but we require the deed restriction so that the development agreement goes with that property and essentially prohibits the property from becoming tax exempt. Right? Because we need that property to generate taxes to secure our, our loan repayment. And then if they decide to, maybe it's a renter occupied and they sell it to another landlord, we have the right to say yes or no to that outright. Um, and even if we do say yes to it, the provision for it to remain affected by taxes will stay in place. So just some things that help us, right? So if they start selling off individual parcels of their overall development, we have protections for that as well. Did you have something? Oh, you look like you're remaining. Okay. Um, here, um, Okay, um, here, um, and James, you can stop me if you weren't going to go into this much detail, but this is the first time they are seeing it today. Um, utility extensions, again, James talked about, we're doing stormwater, sewer, water, and sidewalks, streets, things like that. What we call the dry utilities or electric, natural gas, and telecommunications will be at the expense of the developer. But because we're trying to knit together a patchwork of different developers, it makes sense for us to try to help coordinate that, so it's not four different people reaching out to them, and that we can help sort of just make this easier on everybody. And so, Veer Becker has been great. They've taken that on. Um, they haven't increased the cost of their engineering to do that. They're just, they want to see their project work forward. So, there shouldn't, um, as you can see here, um, that we won't, and the city will not, will support those efforts to coordinate the dry utilities, but will not encumber any costs by doing so. Questions so far from the group? I know James and I are moving pretty fast through this.
This is just for the Dregney part, right? I just want to make sure. I was a little confused.
Yeah, go ahead, James.
And I apologize. Yeah, there, there are, there are essentially four documents of, of this nature for the four different developers. So, there, there's a fair amount of common language that occurs within each of the, of the MOUs. Um, but the specifics around their development, its timing, um, and a few other items will be, will be different. So, I think it's probably really good that, that Nate's going through this one a little bit more thoroughly, and then, you know, we can talk about some of the, the subtle changes or differences in each one of those as we go and, and, and proceed.
Exactly. Good question, Crystal. Anybody else have any questions before we continue to sort of give a lot of information here? So then, as James said, this is our side of it, what we're expected to do, and he, he hit it. We've talked about this before, city takes care of the other side of infrastructure. Um, we make obligations, at least at this point, to be ready to go by October thirty-one, or I'm sorry, October thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. Again, once we get our um, actual construction bids and we march towards development agreements, some of this, some of these details may change. And that's part of what's noted in the MOU is that, is that we're, we're building a basis understanding based on what we know now, but everybody has to be comfortable with things shifting slightly as we learn more in the next month and a half. Uh, let's see. And then the security provisions, insurance, maintaining insurance on the buildings. Again, the tax base that those buildings create is important to us. So as soon as construction begins, we need to have insurance policies in our hand, um, showing that these buildings are insured, and that, um, you know, there's basically provisions if a building were to burn down, those funds are, are used to either rebuild or make the city whole as best as possible. If you remember, on some of the other projects that we've done, we'll hold second position on a mortgage behind their, the developers' banks, because certainly the banks won't tolerate having second positions, so we need to often subordinate to them. Okay? And then, James, I don't know if you want to talk quickly about the irrevocable letter of credit, because that's an important piece as well.
Yeah, the, in terms of the irrevocable letter of credit, what that really does is it, it, it provides a letter of credit to the city, um, that ensures the increment to be generated for the development agreement will be forthcoming. Um, if for whatever reason the, the developer decides not to move forward with the project or, um, an insufficient level of, of increment is generated, that letter of credit becomes the backstop to help provide the city with the security necessary, you know, that the, the tid will adequately cash flow.
So that's an important element in there that sort of protects our, our risk, right? It, it removes a lot of risk from, from our plate. And then guaranteed tax increment, that's what we were talking about. That's what James kind of got done talking about. We need to make sure that these properties are generating what we need to pay for the loan. And then after this, this is just a lot of acknowledgements and contingencies. This is what I was talking before, is, is recognizing that there's still steps ahead of us that we have to, to walk through, that future approvals needed, uh, final development plans. What we have here today are concept plans. Um, some of them are a little bit more fleshed out than others, but certainly as James talked about, we don't have landscaping plans, we don't have final site plans. For a couple of these developers, we don't have, um, even, uh, their initial floor plans. Um, some of them have still been working on, and I weren't ready to share their new updates. Some of them may make changes, and so we do need floor plans, site plans, landscaping plans, um, et cetera, and, and that is all to come. Um, this language here says that parties sign a development agreement, and this says or on, on or or, um, sorry, sign a development agreement or on October twenty-twenty-first, whether it come first. Um, so basically, and that is written correctly, I just read it properly. We do expect to actually sign our development agreements by June, if at all possible. So after today, we have like a two-month march to get these develop, get these turned over in development agreements, because at that point, we'll have our construction numbers. Firm construction numbers, we'll pair that with having our hard development agreements. And similar to what we talked about with the bathhouse projects, we try to line everything up so all the pieces fall into place in our, our known quantities before we pull the trigger in signing construction contracts. Okay? Questions? Um, James, anything to add on this particular MOU?
No, nothing in particular here.
Okay. Um, questions from the group on this first particular MOU?
Do, do we have to have like all the street elevations and all the site mapping done before these developers can get their plans and site plans to you? And is that going to be able to be done in time?
Sure.
Uh, in June that you talked about?
So, and James, feel free to jump in, but I'll, I'll try taking a stab at this. The, the project team, which is consisted of myself, James, um, Sarah, I might have said her twice, and Matt Mukow from Veer Becker have been the four people plus Chad from, um, fire department in terms of just concerns about public safety and good design as it relates to public safety. Um, Rick has been brought in occasionally just to make sure the initial concept plans with streets and whatnot looked okay. Um, but what we've been doing on that project team is making sure that the engineering side that, um, that, um, Veer Becker is doing is in line with what good design we expect. That Sarah keeps an eye on is also in line with what James is doing, working with the developers. So we've been talking across channels this entire time. And, um, Matt has been really good on actually working with some of the developers directly on their site plans to make sure that they are cohesive with infrastructure, right? Because that's really important, is to make sure like, hey, if we're designing roads like this, this is how your buildings have to kind of fit in there a little bit. And you can't have your parking lot exit over here because it's a little too close to where we have an intersection. So, some of those things are happening, um, and they're happening consistently. And James, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's all very accurate. In addition, you know, the, the grading plan is, I believe, a part of what is being let out for bid. Um, you know, as, as you go through the, the, the city's obligations around infrastructure improvements and, you know, so that gives the developers a level of comfort that the sites they will be acquiring from the city, um, you know, are, are within a range, an, an acceptable range on the, on the grade, and that helps them plan pretty effectively as well.
And similar to, um, what happened with, uh, Sleepy Hollow Ford dealership, because that was done in a very similar situation where we had to come in and done infrastructure, brought the parcels to rough grade, but when Spanky went in there with his contractors, they still had to do final grading to get it exactly where they were wanting it to be. But as James says, like, having a, um, smaller sort of window, knowing that, hey, it's going to be between here and here really helps them know that they're not going to have to blow a ton on, on massive grading costs, right? Any other questions? Okay. So again, we're going to flip to some of these other MOUs, but when we talk about numbers and the deal and stuff like that when it comes to money, we'll do that in closed session. Okay? So I have a lot more to show you there, but, um, this will go faster now, because as James said, he's just going to focus on what's different. We've covered what's, at this point, I would say is the general template that's been used, and, and James will go through the, the differences. So the next one up here, James, is the Vikmyer Wangan, um, development agreement.
Sure. So with Vikmyer, the, the Vikmyer Wangan, they are doing a total of six duplex units, and then two five-unit row houses. So their building mix is, is a little bit different here. Um, you know, and, and so as you, as you go down and take a look at the, you know, the agreement itself, they're at approximately three point four acres of property that they will purchase. Um, we've, we've looked at a construction schedule that includes two duplex buildings in twenty-twenty-six, um, two duplex buildings and one five-unit row house in twenty-twenty-seven, and then two duplex buildings and one five-unit row house in twenty-twenty-eight. So, what that does in terms of, you know, taxable value is about one point one million in twenty-twenty-eight, um, two point two five in twenty-twenty-nine, and an additional two point two five in twenty-thirty. And then you can see the, the annual guaranteed tax increment revenue there. Um, you know, so that one, eh, basically, everything in the prior agreement we discussed mirrors this one rather precisely, um, with the exception of the, the differentials in, in increment generation and the timeline around the, the development pieces that they're putting together on, on their parcel.
Any questions on that MOU? Okay. Uh, then we'll look at Newen House.
Sure. So, you know, the, the Newen House development is a total of five fourplex residential buildings. Um, they're up in the, kind of the north and east corner of the, the development as a whole. Um, it's four parcels that are, are fairly, you know, consistent in size with a narrow parcel in the middle that extends from Road C to Road D. That will be the fifth part of this development. So she's looking at the total of those five, you know, fourplex residential buildings. Um, you know, and Newen House will be coming in with some additional site and, uh, and designs for each of the fourplexes. Um, we anticipate seeing those in the, in the not-too-distant future. Um, looking at a, uh, looking at a, you know, approximately one point one six acres in, in, in terms of the property to be purchased. Uh, the, the five fourplex buildings create a total of twenty residential units. And again, we will need to update the Exhibit B once we, we get that information in. Um, the one difference here is that, you know, the Newen House will be looking at doing one fourplex per year over the course of five years. And we'll be starting in, eh, completing the first building by the end of twenty-twenty-seven. So you'll note that a variety of others are, are starting and are actually completing their first building in twenty-twenty-six. Um, the Newen House development delays a year, and there are some logical reasons for that, that, you know, if we need to get into, we certainly can. Um, we anticipate the, you know, taxable value on these fourplexes to be approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand per year. And that translates out to the annual tax increment revenue that is generated per the schedule you see on the screen there. Um, you know, so the, the one thing I would point out on this one is, you know, the development extends over a little bit of a longer period of time. Um, you know, but I think that certainly makes sense. These are, you know, this is a fairly unique product, um, and, and something that's somewhat new uh, to the marketplace in Barokwa, and I think that's a, personally, just a great opportunity uh, to diversify some of your housing stock within, within the community. And, um, you know, so I think it, it definitely becomes a, a very interesting project as a part of, you know, the total development here.
And you'll notice along the way, I have some items that are, are highlighted, James. Those are just some items that I, um, sort of noted as typos that we'll have to correct on the final.
Gotcha.
For, the acreage itself is, is, um, plus or minus maybe one. Uh, let me see. Uh, less than one tenth off, right? So you'll see here on, on Sonya's, it says one point one six. Eh, I think the actual number is maybe one point one five or one point one four. So you'll see that with each one, that the, the actual precise number of acreage is a little off. I think the council will be fine with there being a margin of error with that. And the reason that it exists is that Matt is still working on the preliminary plat, which is what takes the big chunk of land and breaks it up into the individual lots. As roads shift a little bit and this variable changes here and that variable changes there, it kind of drops acreage just a little bit on some of the lots, which makes the total lot acreage change. And so, that's why there's a little bit of that error on here is because we forgot that there were some slight incremental changes in total acreage size. But other than that, um, I double-checked these numbers, and, um, they should be accurate based on what you see here. Um, any questions on the Newen House? Do you have something, Seth?
No.
Nope, it's okay.
I was just curious, are they going to be as energy efficient as, you know, like, those really thick walls and all that stuff?
Are you talking about Newen Houses in particular? Um, some of that detail we don't have yet, um, and that will come to light once we get, um, um, Sonya's full building plans. Um, but I know she has articulated her desire for some of those amenities and some of the, those, uh, design elements. We just, I don't think it's part of the MOU at this point. A good question.
Just curious.
What I can sh- show you, well, I don't, I don't even think I have that anymore, is the updated site plan. So, um, she is actively working on it. It's just, it's going to have to be part of the development agreement. And that's why for her in particular, I cut out the fact that Exhibit B, for the purposes, MOU even exists at this point, because she just doesn't have floor plans to show us at this point. She had shared some with me that were very preliminary, but they've changed so much since then. She's like, those are going to just be misleading if you show those, and the other ones aren't just, are just aren't ready for our eyes yet. So, um, I, I would encourage the council to be okay with that at this juncture. Again, this MOU is just to get us comfortable with what we're talking about, but all that stuff will be very, um, specifically identified and articulated in the final development agreement. Um, sorry, I have to plug in here. James, if you want to get going on the, uh, the Mooney one here. I just gotta plug my computer in.
Yep, not a problem. So, with, with Mooney, um, you, you, you recall, that's the, the southeastern portion of the property, um, kind of shown in gray on the overall site map. Uh, but they are looking at a combination of two twelve-plex residential buildings and then two five-unit row houses. Um, you know, so it's a, a little bit of a different type of development than, than a variety of the others you're seeing there. And I think that lends itself very nicely to, you know, creating a diverse array of housing stock within the, within the overall development. You'll have, you know, a hundred units by the time it's all said and done, in a wide mix of, of different types of, of units here, um, combinations of duplexes, row houses, and then with Mooney, their apartment buildings. Um, one thing that I will point out that is different in Mooney's MOU than any of the others is that the, the Mooney development will, will require a PUD or planned unit development, um, or I'm sorry, a conditional use permit. I apologize. Um, so they'll be, you know, they'll be coming forward, um, you know, through that process, you know, as we move through the process of the, the development agreement and a variety of the other items that are taking place here. So, you know, basically what they're looking at doing is year one of one twelve-plex building. Uh, year two, they'll do another twelve-plex building and one five-unit row house, and then they'll wrap it up in year three with the fifth, or with the last row house. Um, you see the, the increase in taxable value there, and then the annual guaranteed tax increment revenue that they generate as a result of their project. Um, you know, and then, you know, basically like Um, you know, and then, you know, basically, like I said, you know, they, they will need to go through a planned unit development. Um, they're actually working with Veer Becker on that. Um, so that, I think, creates some, some nice synergies and a benefit. Um, you know, making sure that, that everything kind of works very smoothly inside of the overall development in the Hanson Farm. Um, but other than that, everything within their development agreement would effectively be the same as well.
Uh, thanks, uh, James, um. The. Uh, just for those who are listening, I think James misspoke. He started with the PUD, corrected himself to a conditional use permit and then went back to a PUD. So the answer is, it is a PUD. Which, um, for those of you who weren't here for the Vic Meyer Wangan or the North Point project, just means that we have to basically create a new zoning. Specific to this area of town, because none of our current zoning allows a twelve-plex. And so we'll have to, we'll have to go through that process. Um, I think there is some assurances to the developer that we're going to be in favor of his planning a development, because frankly, we created it. Right? You'll note that his plan for his buildings is exactly what we created in the concept plan. Almost to a T, with some subtle variations to things they want to see, but, um. That, uh, just to clarify that. And then James, we just may need to double-check the equalized taxable value on this one. Um, oh, actually, no, this is correct. So they're going to start with a, a twelve-plex, move into a, um. A twelve-plex and a row house and then finish with a row house. Anything else that's different on this particular MOU?
Nothing in particular, um, outside of, again, the PUD and thanks, I, I, I did misspeak or misspoke there, um, initially. But, you know, the, the other thing that I would say is that, you know, through the course of, of working with each of the developers. Um, on this, you know, there, you, we've, we have an understanding and principle. Um, they're, they're willing to go ahead and execute the final MOUs when they're prepared. Um, you know, and in fact, uh, some have even preemptively gone ahead and, and executed. The, uh, their, their current MOU that they have in front of them. Um, you know, so I think, I think things are moving absolutely in the right direction in terms of. You know, coming to a really good understanding, both between the community and these four different developers. Around what is going to transpire and more importantly, when around the project. So. You know, the, the ball is, uh, moving up the proverbial hill, so to speak.
Thanks, James. So we can get into the brass tacks of it and look at the tip analysis and, and talk about the deals a little bit more in closed session at this point. But that is the draft MOUs. Um, so before we, we do that, are there any other questions? So at this point, I think we'd be looking for a motion to go into closed session.
If we're going to read it all again, and you want to. We'll just do a roll call. Or we'll take a motion first.
I'll make a motion when you go into closed session.
Seth, I was thinking. Roll call.
Andrew.
Hi.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
Todd Spath.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
And Seth.
Hi.
Doors are open. We're screen sharing again. People who are in the waiting room have been let back in. Yes, please, Todd. Just a couple. Um, you weren't backing.
Yeah, we are back in open session. Um, so we'll move on to item number sixteen, which is reconvene in open session with possible action on items discussed during closed session.
I'll make a motion. We approve the, uh, MOU discussed in closed session. And this is, go ahead.
This is Seth. I'll second that motion.
Got a motion, a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Lord, you need to name names on this MOU?
I don't think so.
Okay, so the four MOUs, just that you said.
MOUs.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. And you, I did plural, but. Todd Spath.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
Seth?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
And Todd Kirkking.
All right.
All right. Motion passes, item number seventeen, second period for pub, oh, is he gone already? Thanks, James.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Um, second period for public comment. Any, nobody in house here, anybody online have a public comment they'd like to make? Now's the time.
Thank you, good man.
Hearing none, I would take a motion to adjourn.
This is Todd. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
This is Seth. I will second that motion.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned? Thank you, everybody.